Be ready. Welcome to the regularly scheduled meeting of Littleton Planning Commission for Monday, December 11, 2017. Can we please have the roll call?
Commissioner Swartzbacher.
Here.
Commissioner Stallman.
Here.
Chair Riednicki.
Here.
Commissioner Reynolds.
Here.
Commissioner Corbett.
Here.
Commissioner Brydenbaugh.
Here.
And Commissioner Graham is absent. Commissioner Bolt is absent. And Commissioner Kruger is absent.
We do have a quorum, so three-three tie votes, okay. Hopefully we can avoid that tonight. Let's see, you have the agenda. Are there any changes to the agenda? Seeing none, let's move on to approval of the minutes for the November 13, 2017, regular meeting. I did watch the tape since I was away, but not all of it, so I'll be abstaining. Do we have a motion for approval?
I make a motion to approve the meeting minutes.
Second. Thank you. We have a motion and a second. Any comment? Please vote. I'm abstaining.
Did you vote?
Sorry?
Would you like to vote as well?
He's abstaining.
He's abstaining because he wasn't here. Yeah, I wasn't here.
Okay, thank you.
And I didn't watch all the tape, so I'm abstaining.
All right, the motion carries. Thank you.
Okay, thank you. Okay, next item is public comment for items that are not on tonight's agenda. Let's see. Public comment is an opportunity for anyone to express opinions or ask questions on items that are not part of the public hearing. Immediate response should not be expected. Anyone who would like to speak during public comment, please sign in. There's a sheet on the table in the back. We expect comments to be civil. There's a three-minute time limit per speaker. A very efficient timekeeper, recording secretary, will let you know when there's 30 seconds left to speak, and then she'll hold up a yellow card and then hold up a red card when your three minutes is up. When your name is called, please come up, please speak directly in the microphone since the acoustics in this room are pretty poor, and provide your name and address. Do we have a list?
Mr. Chair, while we're getting that sign-in sheet, I just want to clarify that Commissioner Bolt, I will give him a nameplate, but on the board, he will be voting in the Graham spot.
Or if you want to update that board while we're speaking, that would be nice, too. Thank you. We have nobody that has signed up to speak. Is there anyone that wishes to address the planning commission on any issue not on tonight's agenda? Seeing none, we'll go ahead and get into general business, which there is none, so we'll go directly to our public hearings. Item A is PC Resolution 27, 2017, a resolution for floodplain use by special exemption permit for park improvements at Progress Park. Before we start, I have to ask, has anyone visited the site? When you did visit the site, and did you speak to anyone while you were at the site? We'll start here.
I have visited the site in the past, but not in context of this PC resolution.
Okay. Talked to anybody?
Just there for social event, so, yeah.
Right.
I've not visited the site.
I have visited the site, but it was before this was a case.
Okay.
The same. I have previously visited the site, but not in conjunction with this, nor have I really spoken with anyone about it.
Okay.
Ditto.
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 Okay. I did visit the sites yesterday, both sites, and spoke to no one. Okay, we'll now have a staff presentation.
All right. Thank you, Chair. Can everyone hear me okay?
Yes.
That's great. Speak loud.
Thanks, everybody, for coming tonight. My name is Carolyn Roan. I'm the Water Resources Manager here at the city, and part of my duties are as floodplain administrator, so that's why I'm going to give the presentation tonight. So we have two floodplain uses by special exception to present to you tonight. The first one is for park improvements at Progress Park, and this is being, the applicant is South Suburban Parks and Recreation District. Okay, so the request is simply to get a floodplain used by special exception in order to construct improvements at Progress Park, including a new restroom building within the floodplain of Big Dry Creek. And this slide here shows the general process. We're at the very first step, highlighted in red, which is the floodplain used by special exception. And then from there, we also have a sketch plan on file that's being reviewed, and then in the future, we're anticipating getting a grading permit and building permit. So here is the location of the site in question and also its floodplain. Again, this is the Big Dry Creek floodplain. The floodplain is shown in blue. The park boundary is in red, and the floodway is in that red hatch. And as just a refresher, we did provide with the packet kind of a floodplain primer to remind you what the floodplain versus the floodway is. This is the project that is being proposed. It's actually Phase One of proposed improvements to the park, and it includes a new playground, and then tearing down the existing restroom and shelter building and building a new restroom and new shelters, and then associated grading with that. Do we have a pointer? A pointer? Do we have anything like that? There's a, it's not that easy to see on this sketch, but you can, there's a small rectangle building there, which is the new restroom location, kind of to the right of most of the elements. You can see there where the new playground is going.
Excuse me, could you go back to the previous drawing and show us where it occurs?
Yeah.
Previous to that.
So this project is kind of, it's really close to where the arrow end is, where I showed the floodway, but on the other side of the floodway. There's nothing in there.
Thank you.
This, oh, okay. Let me go back. This is the restroom right here, this little block, and this is the playground right there. And there's a shelter building here and a shelter here. These are just some additional details showing some of the project elements. This is an example of what the shelter would look like. It's a completely open structure, and this is just an example of how they are securing some of the playground equipment into the ground. And then the bottom is a cross-section, and I highlighted the floodplain elevation in blue, just so that you can see that it's quite shallow over most of the property. The main channel is here, this little divot in the existing ground. And so by the time you get up here, it's quite shallow. And this is what the proposed restroom would look like, and approximately what the shelter building would look like. All right, so as part of staff analysis, all of the floodplain regulations are included in 10-6, and I've gone through, I stepped through each one of the provisions of that section in your packet, but I thought for tonight, we'd highlight just the main applicable criteria for this project. Work that requires a building permit in the floodplain must obtain this special use by special exception that's approved by the commission, and building footprint elevations must be a minimum of a foot above that designated floodplain elevation. Any fill that's used must be adequately protected from erosion. Fill placement cannot adversely affect the efficiency of the water course. Fill placement has to be the minimum required to floodproof future structures, and that fill cannot result in increased flood heights or threats to public safety, public expense, create nuisances, or conflict with other laws or ordinances. The fill cannot be located in the floodway, and materials and construction must resist hydrodynamic and hydrostatic forces from the floodwaters, and utilities must also resist flood damage and be protected from flooding. So in our analysis, we felt like the project does meet these regulations because it will not increase flood heights or threats to public safety, primarily because it is located outside of the floodway, and the floodway is that portion of the floodplain most important for conveying floodwaters. They have proposed to elevate the restroom building a minimum of a foot above that floodplain elevation, and the construction will be flood-resistant. The playground equipment and the shelter and the restroom building foundations will all be anchored with footings, and because the restroom is elevated above the floodwaters, it doesn't, it won't come into contact with the 100-year flood, so it doesn't need to resist any hydrostatic or dynamic forces. Proposed, sorry. Proposed lighting is going to be located above that floodplain elevation. Sewer service is going to be connected to the public main, and it will be designed with sufficient depth to minimize chances of damage or contaminant release if erosion was to occur. The fill is the minimum necessary to elevate the restroom building, and all the fill is located outside of the floodway. The only comment that we got from agencies was from Excel Energy. They just wanted to make sure to coordinate prior to construction any potential conflicts with their facilities. And so based on this research, we find that the application meets the criteria for approval with the conditions that we've included in the motion. And the conditions that we've added is that prior to construction of the improvements, final design and construction drawings will be submitted, reviewed, and approved. Also, prior to construction, they'll obtain a grading permit and a building permit, and then following the grading and the constructions, they'll apply for a certificate of compliance, which essentially just verifies that they have met all of the requirements of the floodplain regulations, and they will obtain an elevation certificate for the restroom building. And that's the end of my presentation.
Thank you.
Any questions on that?
Questions of a technical nature for staff?
One. So you're talking about the restroom and that being built on a little fill, and then the grass was going to keep away from the erosion factor. Grass is enough just because it's such a gentle slope and the flood doesn't really hit up to that point? Is that why it's only just grass?
Yeah, that's right. I mean, the existing condition out there currently is, of course, just mostly the grassy fields of the park, and the proposed hydraulics won't, because it is so shallow and spread out, it won't create any, shouldn't create any erosion risk with just that cover.
Thanks.
Who does the inspection after the project's complete? It's just a staff surveyor?
Do you know the answer?
So generally, for projects of this nature, we would request that the applicant prepare as-bills of that final condition, so that would be done by their surveyor to be submitted for the city to review and approve. And then we would field visit when we receive those as-bills. For normal grading, you know, we would review on a case-by-case basis, but because of the nature of the floodplain modification, we would require as-bills to be prepared for the grading.
Okay, thanks.
Go ahead. I guess a couple, just a couple of questions. So first of all, what is it that Excel is concerned about? Are there power lines underground, or are they overheads, or what?
As I recall, their letter was kind of general. It just, they just said, "We do have facilities in the area." They didn't identify anything specific that I recall.
So as part of the development review process, the city does send out referrals to agencies and always utilities. So if there are utilities in the area, then generally those utilities contact us, and then also we share that with the applicant so that we coordinate closely, and then the applicant coordinates with them to make sure that they're not impacting. Based on the review to date, it doesn't look like there's any specific impacts that would require relocation. It was more of a notice to be aware that Excel should be contacted during the final construction drawings.
Okay. And the applicant in this case is South Suburban, right?
That's right.
Parks and Rec. And do they, I didn't see just in terms of any sort of submission to the, the development application was just sort of a blank. I know the drawings are here as far as the site plan is concerned. Do they have a master plan for this particular area, or is it just sort of a general site development plan as opposed to anything more substantial?
There is, there is an overall plan that we have seen, and this was just Phase One of that master plan.
For Progress or for other?
Brett Collins, Director of Planning.
You'll have to come down.
Now you'll be able to turn me.
If you give your name.
For the record, Brett Collins, South Suburban Park and Recreation District, Planning Director. We just completed, excuse me, we just completed a complete master plan for the park in partnership with the City of Littleton, planning staff, engineering, we're involved with that. And we do have the entire park planned out now, not just this one area. We're only working towards Phase One right now because that's what funding we think we can get through grants and match funding from the city and South Suburban. So yes, there is an overall master plan for the park.
Okay. And when you say "the park," does that, I assume that means a combination of what we're, the south side, which is what, Littleton, and the north side, which is Englewood, or is there upstream of Littleton?
Well, Progress, Progress Park's just the lower portion of the field. So you have Cornerstone Park and then Hickory Street, Cornerstones to the west and then Hickory Street.
So it's the whole thing?
Progress Park is the whole, yeah, that's just one area for the park. It's not really connected to Cornerstone Park.
Right.
In that area, so it would, the master plan is just for Progress Park alone.
Okay.
And we just completed that. And it does address the entire park.
Okay, all right. And thanks, that's, I think that's all I had with respect to South Suburban. I guess the only, the other question I wanted to ask, can, I don't know, this is probably not you, it's probably more of a planning director or an attorney question, but the code sections in here talk about issuing, you know, the issuing the certificate, what does it say? Eh, now I've lost it. We have to issue the permit that basically says it's a floodplain exception, or we can, we allow what's being pursued, and then if there was much in the way of construction, somebody's got to go back in and review the construction. In this case, it's a bathroom, so it's not a big deal. What's the process that that goes through? Is that strictly a staff function? Does Planning Commission get to see it again? Does it go to council? It's not a rezone, it's not, I don't know, technically a PDO? No, all right, but then, but who's, yeah, the grading permits and the building permits and the sketch plan, but that's all staff review?
That's not, yes. It's all staff review, it's a staff function.
Okay. Okay, all right, I'll stop. Go ahead.
All right. So there's some amount of fill that's being added to the site, and it's such a low amount of fill that it doesn't impact the floodplain, so there's no letter of map revision or conditional letter of map revision required?
That's right. Because all the work is located outside of the floodway, and because that floodway is defined as what the allowable encroachments are, once, because we do have that defined, then we don't have to go through the separate processes for everything that occurs in that flood fringe.
Right.
So I had a similar question. If you could go back to the graphic that shows the floodplain level with the grade, yes, I thought that was quite interesting, and it shows some of the proposed grade changes and all that. So you're saying that you don't have to run that through because it's, can you explain the, sort of the boundaries again, please?
Right, yeah, sure. The, if you can see right here, this is the edge of the floodway. So this, this comprises the floodway, and that's what's been defined by FEMA as the most critical area for conveying the floodwaters. And so anything that really occurs from this line over doesn't significantly affect the floodplain elevations if you were to fill all that in, which of course, this application's not doing that, but, so that's, this represents the maximum extent of fill that could occur.
Oh, wow. Okay, so they could technically fill that entire area in?
In theory. In theory, we'd want to look at that more closely. If any kind of application came in like that, we'd want to look at that more closely, but this one isn't filling that much.
So the little bit of proposed grade change and fill there is not, is not concerning?
No. And again, this is just one cross-section that happens to be taken right at where the restroom is. The rest of the site doesn't necessarily have that much fill.
Okay. But the restroom is elevated one foot above?
Yes.
That blue line, even though?
Yep.
Not to scale necessarily, but?
Yeah, that's the intent, yeah.
Okay, all right, thank you.
Has there been a historic flood that has impacted the existing playground area since it was built, to your knowledge?
To my knowledge, no, but that's certainly something that we could look into. There might be, in some of the urban drainage reports, sometimes they identify historic flooding on certain drainage ways, and we could certainly look. I'm not aware of anything on Big Dry, unless anybody else? Jocelyn, or anybody, you guys recall any flooding here?
We have a lot of newcomers on staff, so.
That's right.
But it's not a common occurrence nonetheless.
No, no, not very.
It'd be a rare event if it did.
Yeah.
Get up on the, on the playground area. The, one of the requirements is to show the connection to the storm, or the sanitary sewer for the restroom. I did not see that on the site plan as developed.
Right, you're, yeah, that's correct. That's something that would come later as part of their sketch plan process and their final design. So that'll be, that's just been a verbal. We've been talking to them about it to make sure that that's the case, and then we'll be, we'll have to ensure that that happens when we review those future documents.
Do you know where that storm, that sanitary sewer line is in relation to the development?
It, if I recall correctly, it runs along the northern portion of the park. Let me, let me see if it's, I've got that in the drawing here. Nope, it's running in that, isn't it?
Based on the plans that you have before you, it's a, it's a sketch plan, so it doesn't necessarily show all of the utility information, and it doesn't appear that that utility line is shown on this plan, but that is something that we do. The sketch plan is, is, you know, the planning document for the site planning purposes, and then there will be construction documents with the engineering details, and that will be reviewed by Public Works Engineering before they do that construction.
I did check some of the city's key maps when we were looking at this to make sure that there was a main already in there, and there is. And like I said, I recall it kind of going diagonally through the northern portion of the property, but we can always provide that information later.
Okay, so it's within that ballfield area somewhere?
Yeah, yes.
Somewhere to the north?
Yeah.
And the existing restroom is, is direct connection to that, that one?
If I, yeah, this, let's see, this building right here, if I recall, this is the one that, where houses the existing restroom, is that, is that correct? And it's a combined shelter and restroom building, so that will get demoed. And I think that line, you know, kind of runs like this, as I recall.
The, the pedestrian bridge shown on sheet L4, is that part of Phase 2?
It's a future phase, yeah. So Phase 1 only includes what was shown on the, on that plan view. So yes, the pedestrian bridge would be coming later.
Okay. And that, I presume, is going to connect at the end of that pathway that abuts the Dry Creek to the east of the, of the playground?
I think, right now, there's this guy right here. Here's one of the future bridges. But again, a lot of that, I don't, I don't know that the design, that's just from the master plan. I don't know for sure that any final locations have been determined on that yet.
Okay, so that's just for future reference on?
Yeah, I think that their, their architect had just, was putting together general details for the whole master plan, but this particular phase, it doesn't apply.
Okay. And then finally, I recall that it mentioned that the ballfields are going to be eliminated in this development. Is that correct?
Can you repeat that?
The ballfields that are there, the softball fields are going to be taken out and as part of this?
I think as part of the master plan, they're looking at reconfiguring some of those.
Okay.
Again, as part of a future phase, yeah.
Okay. That's all I have.
Thank you.
I have the same question about how often has the creek exceeded the floodway, and I guess the answer is, we don't know. We don't, probably none of us go back that far.
Yeah.
The other simple question I have is, the, there's a shelter north of Pirate's Cove that also has restrooms. Is that outside the boundary of the park, of this park, or does that meet current standards and is not included?
I think that's? That's in Inglewood, right? Yeah, I'm, I'm actually not sure.
Okay. I mean, there, you know, there was a shelter and a?
Yeah.
And a, you know, men's and women's restroom. Okay. That's all the questions I have. Anything else? Okay. Does the applicant wish to make a presentation? No, okay. We're now entering public comment. Let's see. Again, public comment is the opportunity for anyone to express opinions, ask questions concerning this public hearing. Immediate response should not be expected. Anyone wants to speak, you have three minutes to speak. Our recording secretary will hold up a yellow card when you have 30 seconds left in your three minutes. She'll hold up a red card when you've exceeded your three minutes. When your name is called, again, please speak directly into the microphone. We have a sign-up sheet, but again, nobody has signed it. Is there anyone, is there anyone else that wishes to speak on this issue that hasn't signed up? Seeing no rush to the rostrum, we will close the public portion of the hearing. Commissioners, do we have a, we have comment? Do we have a motion? Do we have a second?
I move to approve Planning Commission Resolution 27-2017 concerning the floodplain used by special exception for Phase 1 park improvements at Progress Park, case number ENG17-0006, with the following conditions. 1, prior to construction of the improvements in the floodplain, final design and construction drawings shall be submitted, reviewed, and approved. 2, prior to construction, the applicant shall obtain a grading permit and a building permit. 3, following grading and construction, the applicant shall submit materials for a certificate of compliance and shall obtain an elevation certificate for the restroom.
We have a second?
Second.
Robin, that was you?
Yeah.
Thank you. Discussion. Any comments? This side? Any comments? Seeing none, I have none. Discussion over. Please cast your vote.
The vote's unanimous, and the motion carries.
Thank you. Okay, next up, second public hearing, PC Resolution 28, 2017. A resolution for floodplain use by special exemption permit for modification of the Jackass Gulch floodplain at Santa Fe Park North, located at the southwest corner of Santa Fe Drive and Mineral Avenue. Could we please have a staff report? Oh, and, sorry, before I go, let's see, I guess I asked previous whether you had visited one or both sites, so that's taken care of. Go ahead with the staff presentation.
Hello again. My name again is Carolyn Roan, and Anastasia Urban is co-presenting with me. The applicant is Jeff Wickstrom with Evergreen Development, and Mike Moore with Harris Koosher Smith is here tonight also. So the request is, they're requesting a floodplain used by special exception for modification of the Jackass Gulch floodplain. The site is located on undeveloped land in the southwest corner of Mineral Avenue and Santa Fe Drive. This is an overview of the process. Again, we're at the top, highlighted in red, and there's also a subdivision exemption on file right now. And then future applications that we're anticipating would be the plat of the subdivision, a site development plan, and grading permit. This is where the site is located, circled there in, in red, and South Platte Park is immediately to the west of the site, and the RTD Mineral Station on the north. So there's the map view, there's also the, the aerial photo view, where you can also see the South Platte River. All right, so the project proposes to narrow the Jackass Gulch floodplain. This exhibit here shows in the blue hatch, the darker blue hatch, is the existing floodplain, and the red is what it would look like with this modification. To contain that floodplain, there's going to be a new channel. It's going to have a, it's proposed to have a box culvert where the extension of South Platte River Drive would extend into the property. And there'll also be drop structures which help make up the elevation difference in the channel profile, and I'll explain that again in a second. They, they're also extending this channel into the corner of the intersection to help alleviate ponding that might occur there. You can see the ponding in the, in the floodplain delineation there in the intersection, how the way it spreads out right here, in that, that lower portion. If you can, if you can envision that intersection, it's, it's down low. And then they're also proposing to create a pond in South Platte Park, which would lessen the erosion risk and provide some hydrologic benefit to existing wetlands and trees in South Platte Park. This is a more close-up view of the site plan. In the, in the top there, I've highlighted these drop structures as just those half circles in blue, and you can see the trace of the new channel, and then the pond feature at the downstream end in South Platte Park. And so the top is the plan view, and then the bottom portion is what it looks like in profile view. So the drop structures are shown here in profile to help, to help drop that elevation of the proposed channel, because otherwise it would be too steep over the whole length. And then this is where that box culvert would be to convey the flows underneath the future road, and this is what that would look like in, in profile view also. Here, I had some other example photographs in the packet. These are just a couple that I pulled out. This is an example on the left of what a grounded boulder drop structure often looks like. These are very common in the Denver metro area, used for this purpose. We've got a lot of relatively steep channels, and in order to create stable longitudinal grade, we put in these drop structures periodically to help make up the elevation difference. And then the photo on the right is just one example of a grass-lined channel. That's, that's in Littleton, actually. It's quite large, this one wouldn't be that big, but it's got a meandering low-flow channel in it that has some shrubs there. Something important to note about this particular application is that the channel is going to be a flood overflow channel only. The lowest flows are contained in Storm Sewer in Mineral Avenue for Jackass Gulch. So this channel is going to be dry the vast majority of the time. So it's not, it's not going to be the same situation as we presented to you all in some study sessions, that has a, you know, meandering low-flow channel that has water in it often and supports riparian vegetation and that sort of thing. This is a little bit of a different situation. Certainly, when we get into final design details, we can look at ways to naturalize it and make it look aesthetically pleasing as possible, but it won't be quite the same as those examples we presented before. This is an example cross-section. Let's see, I can't even see that myself, but 15-foot bottom width, or 20, 20-foot bottom width approximately, with side slopes, which will, will vary. They are currently showing side slopes at about a 6 to 1 slope, but the idea is that we will vary those with the final design to give it more of an interesting look. So on the right-hand side is, is part of Mineral Avenue. So this would be kind of looking downstream, if you can envision that. So on the far right's Mineral Avenue, then there'll be a sidewalk, and then this channel to hold the flood flows of Jackass Gulch. And so this is an overall plan view. Again, just a little bit, a different view of what we were already looking at earlier, where the existing floodplain is flooding over a huge portion of the site, and this new channel and the new floodplain is going to be in orange right here. So it's extending into the corner as best that we can. There's a lot of existing utilities in this corner, so it's hard to get into the, right into the corner, but we'll get close to it and then intercept those flows and bring them down and into this, what we're calling a spreader pond, which will help re-widen that floodplain again, more like what's out there today. So it's not all concentrated and shooting into South Platte Park. And this is just the same, same view, but on the aerial photo, with the proposed channel coming down and into the pond, which will spread the flows out. And then there's some existing wetlands and trees and whatnot in here that could, could benefit from spreading of those flows if, if and when those flows enter into that channel. So again, like we talked about in the last, with the last application, we went through all the different provisions of 10-6, and again, I'm just going to talk about some of the more relevant provisions to this application. Building floor elevations, again, need to be a minimum of one foot above the floodplain. Fill materials need to be adequately protected from erosion. The fill cannot adversely affect efficiency of the water course. The fill needs to be the minimum required to floodproof structures. It cannot result in increased flood heights or threats to public safety, expense, nuisance, or conflict with other law ordinances. And developing a floodplain when you don't have a floodway cannot cause rise in floodplain elevations in excess of, of a half of a foot or six inches. So this particular floodplain is not a FEMA floodplain, it's just a locally designated floodplain through the Urban Drainage and Flood Control District, and we regulate those the same, basically the same as we do FEMA floodplanes, but this particular one does not have a floodway defined. To continue with some of those regulations, grading, oh, sorry, we've decided that this complies with the regulations because the grading that they're proposing does show that where future buildings would be located will be a foot above that proposed floodplain elevations, and we'll be updating all those grading elevations and corresponding building footprint elevations with future updates to design and analysis. The fill that's being used to shape the channel and elevate the adjacent ground will be protected with grass cover, riprap, erosion blanket, and/or drop structures, depending on the location with the channel and what its particular slope is, or what its specific hydraulic characteristics are at that location will dictate what type of protection measures used there. And this is demonstrated by the applicant with their proposed water flow speeds and the forces that they're showing in the hydraulic modeling, and the tolerances for various types of construction materials. And the maximum rise in the floodplain elevation compared to the existing conditions currently in their analysis does not exceed six inches. It varies from dropping by a significant amount to, I think it was maybe .2, .2 or .3 feet, something like that. And again, as they proceed with the design, they'll continue to update hydraulic modeling to ensure that that condition is still met. to ensure that that condition is still met. The project doesn't increase flood or erosion risks. With that spreading feature, we can spread out the flows and lessen the downstream erosion risk that might occur in South Platte Park, and we've determined it'll comply with all required regulations and permits, particularly through their future applications. One of the things that will need to be investigated will be a U.S. Army Corps of Engineers permit for any potential impact to wetlands where that pond is proposed. All relevant comments that we received from the affected agencies have been addressed. The primary, sorry, the primary comments were from Urban Drainage and Flood Control District and South Suburban Parks and Rec in regard to South Platte Park. Urban Drainage, again, was just concerned with erosion risk mainly within the channel itself, and they, and also just the overall changes to the floodplain, and they are satisfied with the application to date, that it addresses those concerns. And similarly, because we've integrated this spreader pond, because they've integrated that into the design, South Suburban is more comfortable with not being as much erosion coming into the park, and the fact that we're trying, the application is trying to mimic a similar flood flow distribution with that lateral spreading of flows. So, with that, we found that the application meets the criteria for approval with the conditions that we've included in the motion, and those include, prior to approval of the final construction drawings, maintenance and access agreement for construction of that spreader pond in South Platte Park will need to be drafted, executed, and recorded. Prior to construction of the floodplain improvements, the applicant will obtain maintenance eligibility from Urban Drainage and Flood Control District for the channel. Again, they've approved the concept plan, but they'll need to see all the final design in order to finally issue maintenance eligibility, and that just means that they've approved it to include in their maintenance program. And then, prior to construction of the floodplain improvements, the applicant will get a grading And final design drawings will need to be submitted, reviewed, and approved for the proposed channel. And prior to the issuance of the first building permit, the applicant needs to prepare and record the final plat, demonstrating compliance with the use by special exception in the floodplain in a tract. And prior to issuance of the first building permit, an as-built survey and report with this certificate of compliance will be submitted, reviewed, and approved, and no building permit shall be issued for any lot that's encumbered by the existing floodplain until such time as a FAD update has been completed by Urban Drainage. And FAD is just the acronym for Flood Hazard Area Delineation Study. So, in order for the floodplain to be officially revised, they need to go through an update process for that. And so, any of the lots that propose to have structures that are in the existing floodplain, they'll need to have that FAD update done prior to being able to build. And that's all I have. Any questions?
Questions for the applicant? Tactical nature, start this way.
Okay, I have a couple of questions. The flood channel design for a 100-year discharge of 1260 CFS, that's in excess of the 60-inch Storm Sewer that is under Mineral Avenue?
That's correct. The Flood Hazard Area Delineation Study that Urban Drainage has completed shows that at the entrance to that Storm Sewer, it takes around a five-year flow, maybe? And so, anything in excess of that would be coming in, would be part of this superficial residual floodplain on the street.
Is the entrance to that Storm Sewer the, one of the ponds that's located on the east side of Santa Fe? I think they're referred to as the, what, a railroad pond?
Yeah, that's correct. The Jackass Gulch Channel flows westward on the north side of Mineral, and then it goes, I don't have a great picture of it unfortunately, but it goes into what's, I think they're calling it a pond. It's actually on some private property, but then there's a Storm Sewer entrance there.
Okay. And then that proceeds under Santa Fe, down Mineral?
Yes.
So, when there is a flood sheet flow from that pond, that it's emanating overflow from that pond?
Right.
On the east side of Santa Fe? All right, that answers my question there. The HKS calculations for hydraulic flow weren't legible on my copy of the PC packet.
Right, sorry about that. We, first, there was some translation problem when it went on to the website. I don't know, it's correct on Legis... Date, is that how you say it? Legistar, on Legistar. So, we can obviously provide clean copies for you for that.
Okay. The, beyond the spreader pond, directly to the west, at the, there's a ditch and a gate for a water right, apparently, right south of Mineral Avenue on the east side of the South Platte River. Has that been studied in relation to this development and the flow down to the spreader pond?
Are you referring, like, on the screen right here, there's, this is the city ditch, which kind of runs through the middle of the property. Are you talking about something over here?
Yeah, right there, there's a rapid in the South Platte there.
Right in here?
Yeah, just south of the Mineral Avenue Bridge, right in the South Platte River, and that is a diversion to a ditch right there. So, there, I'm not sure where that water is conveyed for, right where that arrow is, right about there, there's a diversion from the river into a ditch.
We haven't studied it in great detail yet, but what's being proposed really doesn't change the flows that reach that point in any way. The, let's see, the low flows, like, the Storm Sewer in Mineral discharge is right here. If you can see that slightly greener area, that's where the Storm Sewer comes in, and so the flood, and the floodflows would be coming here, and since we're spreading them out, it's not, nothing remarkably different will occur at that location. Does that answer your question? Does that make sense?
Okay, yeah, I just wanted to make sure you're aware of that
Okay.
...connection from the river, and its possible impact on what's being done for this, for this drainage study.
Okay.
That's all I have.
Okay. We provided some additional hard copies of the clean report, and we can email a PDF after the meeting as well as needed.
Right?
Yes. So, on the outside referral agency matrix, can you just clarify, do Xs mean that they didn't need to be notified, or?
Here, let me just get to it real quick, so I... I remember, right, we put an X by all the ones that were notified, that we felt like needed to be notified about the project.
Because it's interesting, because the column is labeled "Date Received," but it's Xs, which is not a date or anything.
Hang on one second, let me grab my hard copy.
Okay.
I had the same question. What do the Xs mean?
Just odd, yeah.
Okay, sorry about that. Yeah, XX is indicating that we didn't send them a referral because it didn't apply to them.
So, Excel, there is no applicability here? Excel did not give you...
I don't believe so.
Even though you said on that corner of Santa Fe and Mineral, there's all the utilities on the corner there, are those not Excel utilities?
Yeah. Do you know, I can't, which utilities were?
So, for floodplain modification, the primary purpose of this use by special exception is to review the hydraulic component. A second, secondary part of this will be to prepare full detailed construction drawings, and then those construction drawings will be referred to all of the utilities that are part of our referral agency list, to make sure that all the conflicts, potential conflicts are coordinated.
Okay. So, just briefly, how is this different from the previous case, where it was similar and Excel was notified and?
So, in the previous case, it was approval of construction of a building specifically, and then the shelter, and then the playground equipment. In this case, it's more of the modification of the floodplain, and then, in the prior case, we have further detailed engineering drawings. In this case, it's the hydraulic modeling to consider the request to modify the floodplain, and then with that, then the full detailed construction drawings will follow.
Okay, okay. And then, Carolyn, on the site plan, the drop structures, it's hard to read in the text here, and it's hard to read there. Can you just explain again with the graphic what the drop structures are and how that changes flow, or how we're supposed to interpret that kind of as a commission and laypeople?
Okay, so here, this line here represents what the proposed channel bottom elevation would be, roughly in the middle of the channel, this line right here. And in order to, sorry.
How are we looking at this? Does this, does that, the drop, the drop lines up with
Yeah.
With the graphic?
That's correct, yes.
Okay, so the grade change is consistent with that flow? Okay.
Right. So, here's the, approximately where the drop structure is in plan view, and that's what it would look like in a profile view.
Okay.
And part of the reason it's located right here is because the applicant proposes to put the city ditch into a pipe that's underground, and this was as deep as they could go with that in order to match up with where that pipe is underneath Mineral Avenue, if that makes sense. They're planning to pipe it through the whole site, and so, we needed to keep the channel on the top of it, but we also needed to drop it down to get it to go through this culvert under the road. So, in order to accomplish that and not have it erode, otherwise, it would just be the drop in the channel bottom, and it would be, it would just erode away if there was flow in it, because it'd be too steep. So, this gets reinforced with grounded boulders, like that picture we're showing.
So, reinforces, and does it slow water flow? Is it meant to do that at all, or is it just purely reinforcement?
It's mostly reinforcement. There's usually a plunge basin that gets formed at the bottom of it to help dissipate some energy, so it will act to kind of slow it down in the process.
Okay.
Yeah.
And then, there's a second one after the culvert?
Right, so, yes, we're dropping it down again, just to get this to a more acceptable gradient. And this is where they're looking at possibly reinforcing with a permanent erosion control blanket that has, that's grass-covered, and then we're still discussing with them what to do with this latter segment, but this will have another form of protection on it, because it'll be steep as well.
Okay, okay. And then, your other graphic, where you show floodplanes with the blue and the red and all that, so after, after this work that's proposed to be done is completed, the floodplain changes, or is the blue hatch area still floodplain?
You know, some of this floodplain, if I recall, is, some of this that you see here is from Dad Clark Gulch, as well as Jackass Gulch, they're kind of commingling here. So, this portion here, for sure, is just Jackass Gulch coming across the property where it does this little split. So, that portion at least will be narrowed, and then, but Dad Clark Gulch would look the same. So, that'll still have, there'll still be some floodplain down here associated with that.
But on the applicant's property outlined in red?
It's just Jackass Gulch, right. So, this blue, this blue that you see will turn to what, it'll just be the red when we're all done.
Okay.
Yep.
So, before and after, that's
Yes.
It would be really just a new red channel there, but the rest of the blue inside, the red outline?
Would be, would be gone, yes.
Would be gone, okay. And again, this is not a FEMA floodplain, this is a City of Littleton?
Yeah, what we just call a local floodplain. Urban Drainage and Flood Control District delineated this in 1990 in a flood hazard study.
And you had explained to us in study session all the different hierarchies of urban drainage?
Right.
And is this one, I forget, there was the different characterizations, and some were recognized by Urban Drainage and some weren't, or something?
Well, there are some floodplanes that are recognized and regulated by FEMA, and then there's others that are just local floodplanes, which is what this is, and primarily, that's because the drainage basin isn't very large. Generally, FEMA doesn't map a floodplain until it's over a square mile in drainage area
Okay.
For the whole basin, and this is quite a bit smaller.
Okay, great. Thanks, Carol.
You're up. All right. So, the aerial photograph shows an existing curb cut east of South Platte River Parkway, and is that curb cut being closed off, or is there a box culvert anticipated in that area as well?
It's my understanding that it's being closed off, and it'll just be this one location.
Okay. And just wanting to confirm that all of South Suburban's comments were addressed, they had expressed that concern about pedestrian access to the park?
Right. What, with this floodplain use permit, we've just, we're mostly looking at the hydraulics and the floodplain itself. Certainly, all of the pedestrian use and access points will be further defined and developed in other applications. Right now, the grading plan accommodates a sidewalk on the south side of Mineral that would provide some access in that direction.
Okay. And then, the cross-section of the, sort of the drainage way showed one foot of freeboard in the channel in that cross-section. Would the future buildings be one foot above that freeboard, or is that the elevation of potential future buildings?
That would be, the minimum would have to be at that dash line or higher.
Okay.
Yeah.
Thank you. Five-dollar fine? I better turn mine off.
Bruce?
So, a couple of questions. The, sort of going back to the outside referral agency, you talked about South Suburban having concerns with change in flows and erosion. Was that, when I go back to the proposed motion, bear with me one second till I get Where in here, I know you've got the UDFCD issue is, I think, number two. Where do you address satisfying South Suburban's concerns about the erosion in here?
In condition one. Condition one discusses the access and maintenance agreements that would be required to formally construct that spreader pond.
So, that's basically South Suburban's issue?
That would be something that the city would work in collaboration with both South Suburban and the developer to obtain the necessary access approvals and maintenance agreements of what that final pond would look like
Okay.
And how it's constructed.
Okay, gotcha.
And number four just talks about final design and construction drawings, and that pond would be part of that package.
Okay, all right, good. Now, the progress park item we just did, this wasn't a particular concern, but I'm going to come back to sort of the process of how we're approving a special exception permit. If, the only thing that's even sort of vaguely in the floodplain, not even the floodway is an outhouse, I don't really care. But this is going to be a development project of some sort. It's not clear to me by looking at the site plan drawings what the applicant's intentions are, but I think it's residential. Can anyone stipulate what actually is supposed to go in there?
Might be outside the
Well, then, but I gotta
Discussion tonight.
Maybe, and if it, but it goes to process, and this is why I want to, I don't want to belabor And if it, but it goes to process, and this is why I want to, I don't want to belabor it necessarily. If, if we're going to issue a special exemption permit and it ends up impacting a residential development, then my question's basically going to be essentially this. All of these regs are predicated on a hundred-year flood, which is basically 99%, 1% chance, one out of 100, which basically says 99% chance that it's not going to happen. We, there has been demonstrated attributes of altered climate for whatever reason, I'm not going to go anywhere near the political issues of the thing, but if, we don't even really know if a hundred-year flood is a valid criteria anymore. And so my question ultimately is going to be is, okay, great, let's say we do health, safety and welfare and we say, let's do a 500-year flood. What's it going to cost to do that relative to, or what does that even look like for this project relative to a hundred-year flood? By virtue of the fact that we may be impacting, we may be building stuff in a residential, of a residential development in a floodplain that could be dramatically impacted. Like I said, if it's, if it's an outhouse or restroom, I don't care if it's Progress Park. But if we're talking about putting houses in here and you've got the South Platte Park blue area that's a combination of Dad Clark and Jackass, and you've got this thing being channelized to some respect, coming down, and you get something we've not seen in a long time, we could be putting people in harm's way, which is a really different issue in my opinion. And so, to your point, I, I get that it's building permit after special permit, special exemption, but what I don't understand is, I'm not quite sure how we vote on a special permit for a floodplain if we don't really even understand what's going in there. It seems, unless we get another bite at the apple after the fact to say, okay, we'll give you the permit, come back to us with a plan, and we get to look at the plan again and say, wow, you know, is that something we really want to do or are we okay with it? So that's why I'm asking process.
Well, staff provided us a, the complete plan development, there's like, what, seven sheets included as PDC, PDC, PDC in and around what's now Mineral Avenue, used to be called Ken Carroll, right there.
So this is PDC then?
But they have the right to, they have a residential area with, I think it was 950 units, something like that, that they can disperse due to economic situations. It's, it's in the PD where they can disperse residential to other parts of, of this northern part of the development.
So for clarification, Carol Kuhn representing Community Development, the, the PD does allow some swapping of, between commercial and residential on some of the area, but the floodplain is one of the conditions of approval that Carolyn has added is that it needs to be in a tract. So the floodplain will need to be contained in a tract and then everything will be set back from the tract with any development that comes in. And then we will have final plats for placing that in a tract. And so that will be an opportunity preliminary and final plats for planning commission potentially to have an opportunity unless it's processed as a minor subdivision. City Council will see all final plats though. And then the site plans, if they build to the existing PD though, will be processed as an administrative process. And any building permits though will have to be evaluated for that base flood elevation. Any building, and certain lots will be encumbered on the preliminary plat with an asterisk or some other way to denote that those are still encumbered by the floodplain until the FAD has been completed. And, and so there's, there's a lot of controls in there with those conditions of approval.
So, which is good information, it's still all predicated on 100-year flood, which, you know, who knows? But more to the point, please explain when you say a tract, what exactly do you mean by that?
You can divide things up through subdivision as tracks, which are non-buildable areas where usually open space and floodplanes are placed within tracks. Parks are often put in tracks, you know, maybe some minor playground equipment and some other small structures that are non-habitable structures are, can be put in a, we have regulations about what can be in a tract. Lots are buildable and so we want, so there's a, there's a difference between the tracks and the lots.
Okay, I understand. All right, so then let me ask a couple other questions. So what you're basically, in, in so many words, you're basically saying is not clear what it's going to look like, there will obviously be buildings, some could be commercial, some could be residential, but all of this is in play based on a combination of the subdivision process and staff looking at it from a building permit process and so forth and so on?
Yes, and for any multifamily development or commercial development that will occur, a site development plan will also be submitted in addition to the plats. So there's several applications that need to come forward in order for anything to be developed on the site. But the floodplain will be, as I mentioned, in a tract, and then the lots will be denoted and then any sort of site development plan will come in and then the building permits will follow with a grading permit. The floodplain though, in order to do anything in that area, does need to be made smaller for them to develop any, anything up in that northern portion.
Okay, all right. Let me just a second, let me go back through my notes. On the staff memo, the staff report, it talks about section 10-6-5. Jackass Gulch does not have a delineated floodway, which I understand, so therefore only subsection D4 of 10-6-6, excuse me, applies. This provision limits the encroachment that it can occur in the floodplain, similar to that of what's designated, similar to that with a designated floodway, the maximum increase in 100-year water surface elevation is restricted to a half a foot. This application has changes in water surface elevation ranges from minus three and a half feet to plus 0.23 feet. Can you help me understand what and where that is applicable based on the map you've got up there?
Sure. Let's see. Do you have the clean copy? Okay. Let's see. The, in the attached report that, that comes with the plan, and you can see it in the profile there of the, the profile view of the channel there, there's some stationing along the bottom. And that corresponds with cross sections that are in their hydraulic analysis. And, let's see, trying to remember, let's see, we had a...
And what they did is they submitted what's called a work map, which I'm struggling to locate at the moment, but they have a work map that identifies where those cross section locations are. And then they have a table that compares the proposed and existing water surface elevations at each one of those cross sections. And so it, it shows you where the, the big decrease or the, the increase in elevations are occurring. And I just need to, I just need a few minutes, I can probably locate it better. Do you know if we have, do you have a, did you find it Anastasia? Yeah, right. This might have been the one that you couldn't view very well. So in the memo, I'm just, I don't, I need the, I need the, oh, here it is, this is the work map. I can show it on, maybe I can show it on that. Okay. Okay, great, thank you. Okay, so the drop in water surface elevation of three and a half feet is occurring at 1263, so it's just on the downstream side of where the box culvert is located. Can you get, are you able to see that right there? And the maximum increase in water surface is occurring at the upstream end. And this, this particular table I'm looking at shows, shows it as being one-tenth of a foot rise at 1697, so it's right near the upper, the middle portion of the channel right there, 16.97. And then it varies in between there with different values.
Okay, so, and thank you for that, I appreciate it. It's, I guess, I, I think I understand what you're saying, but I think it sort of goes to Brian's comment about, you know, obviously we're laypeople on this stuff and it's pretty hard to sort of interpret. What, what, what I guess, and I'll stop, let me ask you one more and then I'll, I'll basically, I think I understand the review process better. I, I guess in section 10-6-6, no, it is D4. What it, what it basically says at the end of D4 there, and that's, and this is...
What page are you on?
Ah, well, I'm all over the place. Oops, hang on, I'm trying to get this thing to stop doing what I think it's doing. I am on page eight. And in, on page eight of the staff report, it talks about section 10-6-5. And it bolds, the bold text there is subsection D4 of section 10-6-6. What that subsection says is, when a floodway has not been designated, no new construction, substantial improvement or any other development, including fill, shall be permitted in zones A1 through 30 or AE and AE unless it is demonstrated that the cumulative effect of the proposed development will not increase the water surface elevation of the base flood by more than one-half foot. And what it comes down to is, I mean, really, how do you know? I mean, I guess statistically, you're going to say that in a given set of criteria, you've got a statistical probability that a quote-unquote 100-year flood might be less than this. You guys are saying in here it's max going to be 0.23, not 0.50.
Yeah.
But, I mean, how do we know? We don't really know, do we?
Well, we have to rely on our best tools available, which are some of these hydraulic models. And you're right, I mean, there's a certain amount of uncertainty always, but that, those are the tools available, you know, by common practice today and...
I'll, I'll, I'm going to let it go because I don't want to, I'm totally monopolizing this, I apologize. I, I did read through some of the hydrological stuff, it's obviously an impressive set of statistical analysis and the science is, I'm not disparaging it at all. I, I guess my ultimate concern would be if we wanted more insurance against something that could be a bigger event than 100 years, what would that theoretically look like? Would this be a deeper channel? Would it be a wider channel? Would it be a flatter channel? I don't really know. So I guess what I'm asking ultimately is maybe if the applicant could talk a little bit about that, it would be helpful. So, I'll stop.
Okay.
Thanks.
If you've read through that entire technical report, you're no longer a novice.
Don't believe it.
David?
Can we still have some time left?
Please. All nine.
Let me just say first of all that I don't want to see any restrooms in a floodplain because I don't want that backing up into anywhere where I'm going to be. But let me, let me get, be clear, or just get some clarity on this. I'm looking at the, the colored chart you've got, the colored map that you have that's in blue in the current floodplain. And what I'm, what I feel like I'm understanding is that the, the 100-year flood is going to be coming from the, or the 101-year flood is going to be coming from the east.
Correct.
Heading towards the west, accumulating water on say Jackass Hill, I'm imagining. And then it floods over the top of Santa Fe and then into this culvert, no longer flowing on to Mineral and north of Mineral, is that right?
Right, what happens is it, it actually, it goes under Santa Fe because it follows Mineral underneath.
Oh, because I thought, I thought you were saying that it only, it only, the, whatever, the storm sewer under Santa Fe only holds a certain amount of water. Is that right?
The, the storm sewer for Jackass Gulch that starts on the eastern side?
Yeah.
Yeah, that, it only holds a certain amount of water.
So I'm talking about the, the point at which?
It overtops.
It doesn't hold, or the water's too much for it?
Yeah, and so you can see, in this map, you can see a portion of it. It, the, the channel is up here in this corner?
Right.
And it overflows down into Mineral underneath Santa Fe.
Yeah.
Not underneath Santa Fe, I'm sorry, underneath the railroad, sorry if I'm being confusing. And then it goes on to Santa Fe and because there's a depression there, it kind of spreads out a little bit. And then, and then it splits in two different directions right now.
Right.
Portion of it goes to...
But then after the construction is done, it will no longer split, but it will still go over the top of Santa Fe, is that correct?
Yes, yes.
Okay. All right, and then it, it won't spread to the south either?
That's right, yeah.
So it's just going to be contained for this one parcel, but, and then, so it also, again, it, it won't spread along Mineral like you've got it there to the north of the red line there and north of Mineral, is that right?
Right.
So that'll all be contained down the south?
The applicant is taking all of the water onto their property right now, so this overtopping onto RTD wouldn't occur anymore.
Right, but that, but then it drains into a pond on South Platte Park land, is that right? Is that what you said?
That's what the proposal is, yeah, yep.
All right, and then, but, so yeah, so to be clear too, we're not talking about a flood of South Platte River, that's contained by Chadfield.
Yeah.
We're talking about from the east towards the west of...
That's right, yeah, just in Jackass Gulch.
Okay, all right, thanks.
So this is only overflow like you were saying, so it's not going to affect the level of the seven feet of water on the intersection then? It doesn't add to that or detract from that at all?
No, I mean, we're hoping that it helps less than that.
That's my second question.
Yes.
Any possibility you can make that so it could actually help with that at all? So, so that sounds at least positive. So you know, there's, the talk starting in the city now about wanting to change that intersection, the Santa Fe, is there, it's probably too nebulous to make any decisions on, but is any of that able to be taken into account here? I don't, probably too nebulous, but just curious.
The review of the intersection from a transportation perspective is, is in the very preliminary stages. While we will consider obviously any impacts to that, to that stormwater, it may be somewhat of an interim condition at that, at that corner because obviously there'll be a lot of improvements and, and as you mentioned, you know, there's, there's some Excel boxes and things in the right of way that all of those aspects will have to be reviewed during that design. So, so again, you know, future stormwater will be reviewed in, in greater detail with those intersection improvements, but, but we don't believe that we'll be, be able to accommodate the ultimate design with this, with this current proposal.
That makes sense. So in the outside referral agency, the Colorado Geological Society had some concerns about shallow groundwater and unsuitable soils, and you didn't find that an issue at all then?
Not for this particular process. I, I believe that that will be something that'll probably be addressed as part of the grading permit and some of the subdivision plans.
My last question's probably similar to along with Bruce. So this was done in 1990 and they're talking about the 1240 CFS. So much has changed... So much has changed since then. Is this being able to take into account all those changes?
Well, we believe that the hydrology is probably fairly close because they, urban drainage did consider a full build-out of development when generating that hydrology. As part of the FAD update that would happen after this, they will be going back to reevaluate that and make sure everything is, is correct. And that's why we're, we're not going to issue any building permits until that is done in case something comes out of that process that would change this delineation in some way.
Yeah, it's, those unintended consequences that, you know, you're like, how do I answer those questions?
Yeah.
And you really can't.
Yeah.
That's it, thank you.
Okay. A general question, Urban Drainage Flood Control District, how big of an area do they control? Entire metro area or Littleton and Inglewood or somewhere between?
No, they're, they're the entire metro area. Let's see, I can probably...
Just, that's good enough, just the entire...
Yeah, I could bring, I could bring up a map. It's, it's pretty extensive. It goes, let's see, it includes down, where's the south end? Sort of Lone Tree, Centennial, Parker, and then up to, I want to say, like Lafayette, maybe is kind of the northern edge.
Okay, so, very large area.
Yeah.
Let's see, if you're on the plat trail east of the river, you go underneath Mineral. There's a small stream that is from the east heading west. Is that stream a result of the 60-inch, existing 60-inch culvert?
That's right, yeah.
Okay.
That's, that's the low, that's Jackass Gulch storm sewer out, outflow, yeah.
Okay, so that's where that water, I didn't follow it through the brambles to its source, so, but there's a pipe that comes out.
Yes.
Okay. As far as the, one concern I have is South Suburban Park and Recreation, that they, they, they talk about concerns. I'm wondering about the process, how, how deep are they into approval or agreement with this, with this, with this plan? Because this, you are working, digging, moving earth on their property, or their, the control, the property they control. So, they have concerns and, but the concerns is quite a nebulous word. Should we try to mitigate all their concerns now or wait and hopefully it doesn't explode down the road?
Well, we hope, they're, they're in agreement, the general concept, and I don't, do you want to add anything, Brett? I mean...
We can have, the applicant's going to make, he has a chance to make a presentation.
That's right, yeah.
Okay. But, so, have they been involved? Are they in general agreement but with concerns? Is that how you would put it?
I, I think there, there, they were concerns with initial, initial versions of the application before we were showing this spreader pond, that it'll effectively address a lot of their, their concerns.
Let's talk about the spreader pond. Is it, is there a, a dam created at one end to, to create this pond or are they just shallowing out to create a pond? And then there are some meandering, not real organized pathways in that area. Will they be affected or does this pond work around those pathways?
Well, let me, I'm going to bring up the aerial photo.
I guess I can understand completely what's going on, on the Enzer property, but once it gets a little, I'll use the word, gets a little nebulous once you, once you get on to the plat river.
Right. The, the preliminary grading right now shows that it's primarily in cut, the pond is, so there wouldn't be this big dam. And, and we certainly wouldn't really want to do something like that that would appear unnatural. The idea would be that this would be shaped in such a way that it blends into the landscape as much as possible. The final, like I said, the final design and earthwork is still to be worked out. But the idea is we'd work around some of the existing pockets of trees and help protect those. The, the low-flow outlet of Jackass Gulch would remain the way it is and that hopefully the spreader pond would allow any floodwaters to spread out into those multiple little channels that are out there today.
Okay, because it is rather, I mean, it goes everywhere in that area, just down that, down that little cliff area there.
Yeah.
The brow of the, looks like that's been gouged out by the plat river over millennia. Let's see. Public notice, you sent a public notice to 700-foot radius. Was there any public comment received back?
Staff received one inquiry from the railroad, just asking for clarification about the project. And we helped them find the application and the agenda item on the website, and there were no further questions from there.
Not further, okay. If there were, we would have liked to have seen that, obviously. Probably can't answer this question like you couldn't answer the last one for the, for the, the park up to the north. How often does a storm sewer, the existing 60-foot storm sewer overflowed?
There is no known occurrence of it flooding out. So, because we've, we've been asking some folks about that who've been working here for more, for longer periods of time, and there is no known occurrence of that.
Okay. I think that's all my questions. Other questions were asked by others and answered by you. Any other questions? Thank you.
I have one further question. Can you speak to any plans of how this new channel will be maintained by the applicant in respect to trash or debris that collects in there because it's adjacent to such a busy intersection where there's littering and, and litter flying around?
Yeah. The idea is that the channel itself will actually be maintained by urban drainage and flood control district. And so one, and one of the conditions we have on this is that they do obtain maintenance eligibility through that program. And what, and that, that maintenance program does go through and do trash and debris and mowing and that kind of, of maintenance. So that would be done by urban drainage. The pond itself, that's the maintenance agreement that we would have to work out. That's the first condition that we put on the application. That would not be maintained by urban drainage, so we'll have to work that one out. It would be the applicant likely, but we, again, we have to work the details.
Okay, yeah, that's important, I think, because there could be a lot of trash in that pond that could work its way into the South Platte if it wasn't, wasn't removed.
Before we get to the applicant's presentation, I want to change things up just a whisker. Could the, we have, do have South Suburban, correct? Could you speak very, very briefly, come down here and speak briefly about your involvement and perhaps talk about your concerns? Are you generally in, in support of this agreement if it passes?
Again, Brett Collins, South Suburban. I also have Scott Latona with South Platte Park. He manages the park, so he's been involved with the applicant on this project. We are in support of the current plan that has been presented to the commission. We will need to work out the details of how the pond and the spreader actually work. There's not a lot of detail on that yet, so I think working with the Littleton staff, our planning staff, and the park, South Platte Park staff, I think we can come to some kind of an agreement on how that will work. I think in the long term, it'll be a benefit if it, we does get some residual water from rainstorms. Because now the, the water flows over the property and into the park and does water some of those trees and grasses now. And, and that's kind of what we're trying to mimic and get that back rather than take that away because then those areas dry up and we don't get as much vegetation growing. So, yes, we are in support as of now and would like to continue to work with the applicant on it.
Thank you, that's what I need to know. Thank you, appreciate it. Applicant wish to make a presentation? Good evening. Please state your name and address and who you represent, address, all that good stuff.
Sure. My name's Mike Moore. I'm with Harris Coker Smith, 1120 Lincoln Street, Suite 1000, Denver. I'm here on behalf of Evergreen Development, who's looking to purchase the subject property. And I'd really like to thank Carolyn and Anastasia, did a great job and unfortunately stole a lot of my material. So, I'm going to keep this intentionally brief for you guys. And if I look down at my notes from time to time, just kind of bear with me, I'm trying to maybe address some of your comments that you had as you kind of walked through this. So, generally speaking, I just want to kind of start with a vicinity map site. You guys are obviously very familiar now. Located at southwest corner of Santa Fe and Mineral. It's about a 33, 33-acre site, just to give you guys some reference for the blob there of what it is. Generally speaking, the drainage that, that is Jackass Gulch and that we're discussing tonight flows from the east, kind of up the hill. There is a pond kind of at that northeast intersection. There's the, the railroad and the light rail that go over Mineral as Mineral kind of dives down into that intersection. And then what kind of causes the ponding issue in the intersection is actually that from there, all three roadways, north, south, and west, kind of go up, which creates that kind of split condition on the west side. Give you guys a little bit of information on the actual Jackass Gulch floodway, kind of reiterating here a lot. Again, it's a existing city and urban drainage flood controlled, recognized local floodway, so it's not a feeble jurisdictional floodway. And the limits of that flooding are kind of modeled and shown in the FAD report, which is something that urban drainage typically develops with private consultants for cities and themselves so they can analyze regional floods. And the, that jag floodway appears to inundate the subject tract along with the intersection during the 100-year storm event, though, as kind of indicated, nobody's ever really seen this happen. But to your point, how do we really know? Kind of work with, like she said, the tools we give us, there's kind of nationally federally recognized ways to model flooding, given the current floods that we've had in Colorado. I know it's sometimes hard to fully accept that, but it's kind of the standard that we're held to as engineers, just generally speaking, and I'll touch on that a little bit more as we get into the design. This is a map from the 1990 FAD that shows the general limits of kind of what you guys were shown on the color exhibit. You've got the intersection here, our subject tract is in this general area here. As Mineral rises, there's a high point in Mineral right here where it's coming up and then it starts to go back down towards the plat. That's where the flow split occurs. So all of the drainage coming from here comes to here. There is a small pond up here that drains into storm sewer that is down, there's actually inlets down in this intersection, and that all connects from here to these pipes. And these pipes drain this way to that stream location right here that then drains into the South Platte. To answer one of the questions, given the condition here in the plat, there will be no changes to that condition. Will be required to allow that water to pass through for the park to keep the wetlands and everything in place. Also, we're not really blocking the main source of drainage in here to that, so there should be no impact to the plat here based on what we end up doing here at all from a flood perspective. Let's see here. Just to kind of give you guys an idea of process we've been through from a community outreach perspective. To start, we have had numerous meetings with city engineering staff, urban drainage engineering staff, South Suburban Park to understand, when we started looking at this, how we were going to go about it. Had some back and forth with some initial designs, met, met with everybody, kind of came up with a plan with all those parties. Once we developed what we wanted to do with this channel, we made a formal application to you guys. And as a part of that, there was a neighborhood meeting required. We scheduled a neighborhood meeting at Hudson Gardens. We sent out the same 700-foot radius post, which equals about 76 property owners. We had nobody in attendance at that meeting. So that happened. And then we came in for the regular posting. We posted three signs at the property in accordance with your guys' requirements for 15 days prior to this hearing, sent out the same notices to the same property owners. And as the engineering staff indicated, we received little to no feedback from surrounding property owners. The general concept behind what we're requesting tonight is to modify the floodplain across the subject tract specifically. Originally, we'd come to the city with a plan that only, you know, that primarily eliminated the condition across the subject tract. Then we worked with city staff to actually extend this channel to the intersection, which helps mitigate some of the ponding in the intersection to kind of help an overall regional issue for the best we could. The city ditch that was mentioned that we're going to pipe, you know, we, we took the channel as low as we could over that to get it to the intersection to kind of mitigate flooding in there as best we could. The channel's going to be installed on our property just south of Mineral, where future Platte River Parkway is, which is the intersection at Mineral for the RTD station. We're planning the box culvert or culverts, depending on what they end up being sized for. I'd also like to iterate that most likely, or there will be pedestrian connections from the future development, whatever it may be, to Mineral. And there will be sidewalk improvements along Mineral as well. So we're not, you know, restricting any kind of pedestrian connectivity with this channel. We're just planning to incorporate it into the driveway section that will be installed later, which is pretty typical. And then downstream of, sorry, the channel has drop structures that were indicated. The drop structures are needed to kind of dissipate that flow and also to get the channel slopes to a gradient that's acceptable to keep velocities and erosion to a minimum. These channels have a lot of flow going in them, so it's important to kind of keep those at a shallower slope. And that's kind of the primary use of those drop structures, along with getting over utilities. And then we'll work with South Suburban on construction of this spreader pond on their property, which, you know, the intent is to leave the stream bay, you know, the stream in place for the 60-inch pipe, leave all the trees existing as they were, really work with South Suburban to create a natural feel there. We don't want to create anything that looks out of place there either, so it's the intent to work with South Suburban. And obviously, we need their support to make this happen, so we will do that during final construction drawings and final plating and whatnot. We kind of went through this a little bit. The gray area is, is the existing flooding as it is today and as exists, based on the information that we have. Most of the flooding on our property, though nobody's really ever witnessed it, is considered to be a shallow flood, so typically less than a foot in depth. So let's, you know, if the whole hill was just screaming down here and it overtopped everything, we would expect to see about a foot, a foot of flood going over that field right now. And that's what we're trying to mitigate and put it in the channel. Kind of just talk about the channel section a little bit. On the right side is Mineral. We'll be installing a standard tree lawn and sidewalk along Mineral, and then we'll kind of move into this channel, which has a varied 60 to 70-foot wide section, average depth of four to five feet. Someone had brought up the freeboard earlier. Freeboard across the board from a drainage perspective is almost always calculated at 12 inches. You provide an extra 12 inches of freeboard on top of channel designs, ponds designs, those kind of things. And I think that has a lot to do, and I, I'm speaking for engineering staff in the past, but when they assign the one-foot max increase to the flood elevation, that's double the freeboard requirement that's typically required of 12 inches for most drainage designs in the Denver metro area. So, the freeboard in itself is kind of the safety factor that I think you may be looking for, and your guys' code reflects that by your floodplain requirements essentially doubling the restriction of that requirement in allowing us to adjust that flood elevation. So, I, that's typically the way that I would explain that and how that all comes into play. Whether or not that fully answers your question or not, that's my go at it. So this is an existing condition today. This would be for a pedestrian traveling eastbound on Mineral. You can see the Santa Fe light in the background. This is just as you're kind of coming up on top of the hill, you're sort of near the western boundary of the subject tract. And then this is what we would anticipate this to look like in a finished condition. You'll have a tree lawn sidewalk, and then over to the right, you've got the channel, which should look pretty, you know, shouldn't be too intrusive. You shouldn't really notice it, and you would have a typical box culvert underneath a drive. You see a lot of these with major drainage channels around the metro area. It's pretty typical. It'd be an urban drainage maintained, natural channel. They'd mow it, they'd clean it. And this is typically what we would expect this to look like. The benefits of this, obviously, in our opinion, one of the more important things is it's helping mitigate the flooding in the intersection. We, this is really important city staff, and we worked with them to extend this channel to that intersection. to that intersection as best we could to help mitigate this situation. Obviously, this allows the subject tract to be more developable, provides more area that floodplain on the property is pretty intrusive, and we're trying to mitigate that for future purposes. And obviously, coordinating with South Suburban and Littleton staff on the final designs, the spreader ponds, and that'll all help to distribute stormwater to where South Suburban wants it to go and kind of help wetlands and those kind of things. This is just kind of an aerial map for the site. If you guys have anything you want to discuss, we can kind of reference back to this. I would like to note that it's our opinion that we are complying with all the requirements of the floodplain permit. We're working very close with city staff to address all the concerns required in the code, and it's our opinion that we've done that, you know, protecting human health, or human health, life and health by mitigating flooding impacts and minimizing damage to public facilities, those kind of things. We think this is a benefit to not only the property, but to Littleton. And I think that's about all I've got. I'm here to answer questions. I've also got our Water Resources manager who did most of the calculated stuff, calculated hard stuff here also to answer questions.
Questions to the applicant? Rob, go ahead.
So as has been mentioned, we can only do this based on our best available tools. So based on history, how accurate are the models?
They are more accurate today, what's in front of you, than they have been before.
So what's your confidence level? Is it like a 95% confidence level, or give me something a little more specific?
I mean, we as engineers, we don't want anything to flood any more than you guys do.
Of course not.
And our licenses are on the line for that. We work within the rules and regulations of the jurisdictions that we have to. I think our industry overall is conservative, which why we have floodplain requirements, we have one-foot freeboard requirements. Buildings need to be placed one foot above that, and it's all related to that. So I'm very confident that the design works. For what I would call a preliminary level design, which is kind of where we're at, even though it doesn't really seem like it, we've done some pretty advanced modeling for urban drainage, 3D modeling in for the city, and provided all that to you guys. So we're not, you know, we didn't draw this last week. We've been looking at this for eight months and really putting some time and effort into this to make sure we get it right.
So just curious, I've been in jobs where you have modeling is your life.
Right.
And you look at, you analyze after the fact to make sure the modeling is accurate and you're updating, and I'm assuming you guys are doing the same sort of thing with your modeling, checking after the fact to make sure that it's accurate and...
Absolutely. We started with the 1990 FAD as a base point, which is typical, and then you go back and you look at the whole thing. You look at the whole upstream drainage basin. We talked with urban drainage about making sure that everybody agreed that what was up there and what got developed matched what was assumed in the 1990 report, and you kind of start there. And then you go out with current data, current survey, and you go out and run these models. And, you know, they're as accurate as we can make them.
Thank you.
David, you got anything?
David first. Dave? So when you do your modeling, what, I'm assuming that you guys are going to, as you say, you've been working the models for a while. From a sensitivity analysis perspective, I know, you know, you've got what fits with urban drainage, and you've got the FEMA components and so forth and so on. How much water do you have to push down here based on the design parameters you guys have outlined before it becomes a major problem? I mean, how much? And by the way, I appreciate your comment about the, you know, the flood, you know, I forget what you called it, the baseline or the base board or whatever.
Sure, yeah, freeboard.
Freeboard.
Yep.
And then, you know, 2X kind of thing, that's actually helpful, so I appreciate that. But how long, how far do you have to push the models from a sensitivity or stress test perspective until you break the thing?
It's our job to fix the problem, not to break it. You know, since this isn't a FEMA regulated floodplain.
Right.
Honestly, it's a little less concerning to us. It's a local floodway. FEMA typically regulates, what is it, 500 acres or more? Square mile, I mean, it's a huge significant floodplain. So for us, this is more of a regional model with established floodplanes. There's available survey data out there and GIS information for us to delineate those floodplanes. So, you know, this is something that we've been doing since school. It's very easy for us to look at these things, define a drainage basin, understand how the water's going to react. And when you're doing these big regional studies, they're typically a lot more conservative than if you were looking at a one-acre site, just in their nature, because you're analyzing a bigger area. So you're making larger assumptions that you're assuming the factor of error in your design. So by the time you get down to where we're talking about, we feel very comfortable that the flows that we're assuming are going to be there and calculating are going to be there, based on engineering judgment, are accurate or conservative. So I would anticipate that our numbers are more conservative than anything.
Which I respect. I mean, I get, you know, from a professional standpoint, you guys, you know, are doing what you're saying you're going to be doing, and there's no incentive for you to not be conservative and make sure you got, you're covered.
Right.
Let me ask it slightly differently, then. If we wanted to be belt and suspenders on this thing, and you've got, would you say, a 60, 70-foot width in terms of the depth of your drainage ditch?
Right.
How much, either wider or deeper, would it need to go to be double safe? I mean, if you added another, you know, 10 feet on each side, or if you took it another five feet deep, what does that do? Does that, what does that mean? What does that do for anybody?
Well, generally speaking, if you double the width, you double the safe. Right?
Say it again.
If you double the width, you double the safe. But in my opinion, the industry standard and what anybody, other jurisdiction would hold us to here is the foot of freeboard on top. So you have an established water surface elevation. So we have 1,260 CFS going in that channel, and we've designed a channel section that holds that with a maximum four-foot depth of ponded water. So when that channel's just roaring, it's a four-foot depth in that channel, and that's it.
Okay.
And then our belt and suspenders on top of that is another foot above that before the channel levels off.
Okay.
And we can have a building. So we're adding a 20% contingency on top of the design, straight out of the box. And it's probably a little bit more than that, because as the channel widens, you get more capacity, just naturally, because of the math of the trapezoid. But in my opinion, there's a 20 to 25% factor of safety.
Right.
Design into the channel that we've already given you, and that would be the expected standard for any city around here.
Which, again, I think that's helpful, but to contextualize it in terms of maybe something that's, and I think I understand what you're saying, and I think that actually is helpful, but to get the base, what'd you call it, the freeboard?
Well, there's the water surface in the channel.
Yeah.
And then there's the freeboard, which is just extra space without water in it.
So how many inches of rain theoretically do you estimate it would have to fall to get the base channel and then to get the freeboard? Do you have any way to guesstimate those numbers?
I think the current Hundred Year Design Storm is 2.6 inches in 24 hours.
Two, two and a half inches, 2.6 in 24 hours?
24 hours.
Okay.
In Texas, it's like 12 inches, 24 hours.
Yeah.
So we don't get a lot of rain here. Some places you do, but nationally speaking, yes.
All right.
Yeah.
Do we have any idea how much fell in the 66 flood? I mean, it can happen, right?
Yeah.
Okay.
I was born in 83, you'll have to forgive me.
Well, no, I understand what you're saying. I mean, it's tough, because, I mean, yeah, I've been in places where it's, you know, we got a foot of water in 24 hours.
Sure.
You know, and...
I have too.
Yeah, it's not a lot of fun. But yeah, it's drier out here, but that, I mean, you know, I mean, the Big Thompson, they had a lot of water come down, you know, in a very short period of time.
Yeah, and I'm sorry, I don't mean to interrupt you. You know, urban drainage controls the drainage criteria and the drainage analysis for this entire region.
Yeah.
And I hate to regurgitate, but we have to kind of work with the tools that we're given, and they establish what we design to, and there's factors of safety built into all that.
Well, true, but we have to agree to the whole thing.
Sure.
I mean, I get what you're saying, but...
Absolutely.
Our responsibility is, you know, to the community, too.
Right.
So, all right, I'll go ahead. I'm done. All right? No questions?
Go ahead.
No questions?
No questions.
Yeah.
So can you please pull up your floodplain map that was similar to Carolyn's? What the...
This one?
Yes. So currently, the green outline and the gray shaded area is the current floodplain.
Correct.
It's defined by urban drainage. So is the, if that's current, is the after the gold outline?
Yes.
Sort of what?
Yes.
What you anticipate the floodplain would be?
Yes. So we would anticipate the floodplain limits would be onto the subject tract as a whole, would go from this to this. And when staff was mentioning a tract, this is what would be a tract in itself. And so we'd work with staff as we finalize the designs to establish what that tract needs to be, and a lot of developments you'd do an easement to or something, and you have an established requirement for what that easement width is based on the channel that you're installing and all the parameters that are involved with it in the final design.
Okay. And so all this discussion that we've had up and down about confidence levels and things like that, that's your confidence level that it goes into the gold outlined area, and that would be for your future applications or anything that applicant might want to do for this site, would be building around those gold outlined areas and a new floodplain?
Yes, and we would work with city staff to prove all of that and back it all up, and that's the kind of information that would end up on preliminary final plats, those kind of things.
Yes.
When we come in later date.
Okay. Thank you.
What is the acreage of the watershed to the east that's contributing to this?
I have that. Give me a second. It's approximately 500 acres, which is probably where that 500 number came from in my head earlier.
So that, for the maximum anticipated rainfall event, would produce the 1,260 CFS in the channel?
Correct.
Okay. If that happens, call me up, because I want to bring my kayak down there.
Right.
Yeah, I think for the South Plat, since the construction of the Chatfield Dam, the maximum flows at, oh, probably Union has been around 4,000.
Right.
So this is quite a big flow.
This is extreme.
Big extreme flow.
Yep, agreed. Sure.
I have just one question. Most of my questions were answered by staff. The maximum flow is, what, 1,250 cubic feet per second? Is that correct?
Yes, sir.
It's one heck of a flow.
It is.
Okay, yeah. Any other questions of the applicant? See none? Thank you.
All right, thank you, guys.
Well, now, open it up to public comment. The rules still apply.
She's got, Carol's got a question.
I'm sorry, Carol?
Staff has clarification.
Oh, okay.
Good evening. As a big part of tonight's presentation and discussion involved the use of South Plat Park, we just wanted to clarify that condition number one does include requirements to obtain approval for access and maintenance agreements. South Plat Park is owned by the city and maintained by South Suburban, but it will require city council approval for ultimate use of that park.
Yeah, just, you know, bulldozer showing up at the doorstep, entering without South Suburban knowing, you know, that image sticks in my mind.
Sure.
Ponds, what pond?
Yep, and again, we just wanted to make that clarification that it was jointly owned and maintained.
That's true. I misspoke. Yeah, the land is owned by Littleton.
Correct.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, public comment. Again, the rules still apply. You'll have three minutes to speak. When 30 seconds are left, you'll get a yellow card from our dedicated staff member, and when your three minutes is up, you'll get a red card. We have one speaker, Pam Chadburn.
So I am Pam Chadburn. I live, I'm blogging from here, and I'm going to say, please do not give regulatory approval for this proposed radical destruction of this floodplain. And you've already seen the large difference in area between the blue and the red. It's a dramatic difference. And this is by the South Plat River, which you have declared, or this board with maybe other members, as a key part of Littleton. So the regulatory decision follow our regulations, like the comprehensive plan and the South Plat River corridor design objectives. So let me say that, and how do I show everything? So goal two policy, treat the South Plat River and its tributaries as one of the city's most important assets. Notice what we're talking about here, a tributary. Inventory, protect, and enhance the river's primary natural areas and wildlife habitat. Build on assets that are unique to Littleton, such as the river and its adjoining natural areas, and create distinctive gateways. This is a gateway, and the kind of distinction that you'd get with this modification is not one that we're supposed to have. Ensure that the river and its areas remain healthy and vibrant. This changes it fundamentally. This is from the South Plat River corridor development design objectives. The picture is from there, and please notice, the picture is much more like the existing state. And it says, to preserve, enhance, and incorporate existing landscape features and vegetation, that's the goal. Existing landscape features, for example, ponds, swales, wetlands, canals, et cetera, should be retained and incorporated as landscape opportunities. Existing drainage ways and patterns should be utilized as landscape opportunities, not And an alternative here is, it appears that they're trying to shield Mineral so they could actually redirect this, not channelize in the area it is. There's an alternative, and I'm not going to spend time on it. There are other parts of this to reserve, Littleton's agricultural history, encourage a rural character. Imagine if this development had portions of it on this key corner that maintain that. And there is more. This never should have reached this state. It shouldn't be up for consideration, and I ask you to vote against it for regulatory reasons, not because of the hydrology, but because regulatory-wise, it shouldn't be here. Thanks very much.
Thank you. Anyone else that hasn't signed up that wishes to speak? Again, seeing no rush to the rostrum, we'll, oh, the applicant, do you wish to have any final comments? Thank you. We'll close the public hearing portion, entertain a motion a second, and we'll have a discussion. I think you're our designated motion person.
Is that right? Yeah. All right.
Good luck.
Yeah, no kidding. I move to approve Planning Commission Resolution 28-2017 concerning the floodplain used by special exception for modification of the Jackass Gulch floodplain at Santa Fe Park North, case number ENG 17-0005, with the following conditions. One, prior to approval of the final construction drawings, maintenance and access agreements for construction of the stormwater feature on the South Plat Park parcel shall be drafted, executed, and recorded. Two, prior to construction of the floodplain improvements, the applicant shall obtain UDFCD maintenance eligibility approval for the channel. Three, prior to construction of the floodplain improvements, the...
of the floodplain improvements, the applicant shall obtain a grading permit. Four, prior to construction of the floodplain improvements, final design construction drawings shall be submitted, reviewed, and approved. Five, prior to the issuance of the first building permit, the applicant shall prepare and record the final plat with, which demonstrates compliance with the approved use by special exception and the floodplain contained in a tract. Six, prior to issuance of the first, issuance of the first building permit, an as-built survey and report, along with the certificate of compliance, shall be submitted, reviewed, and approved. And seven, no building permits shall be issued for any lot encumbered by existing floodplain until such time as the FHAD update has been completed by Urban Drainage and Flood Control District.
We have a motion. Do we have a second? We have a second discussion. Comments? Start, let's start this way.
I think that if we look back at time before Mineral was built and Santa Fe was built, the Jackass Hill Gulch would have crossed Santa Fe, and there would have been a channel down to the South Platte River. And with all the development for the South Metro urbanization, that was filled in. And it was because it was a small 500-acre watershed that the drainage was, has been up-to-date, apparently handled pretty adequately with the retention ponds, called the railroad ponds up that corner of Mineral and Santa Fe. So in effect, what we have is we've created a surface flow, which was previously a channelized flow because of the development Aspen Grove and the filling along the river and construction of the roads. So in a way, this is recreating a channel to allow that drainage to have a way down to the river in a more direct fashion that's engineered with drop structures for erosion mitigation. So all in all, if you look at the overall history of the site and how it would have been before development of the South Metro area in Littleton, it's an improvement to restore the drainage to a more natural condition.
That's it. Anything, Dan?
So first thing is, recording secretary, I don't know if you noticed, but Bruce, as he was reading, corrected some typos. So you got those?
Okay.
Okay.
Maybe he didn't notice another.
No, he did.
I did. There were a couple.
He corrected as he was reading to correct the grammar. So, yeah, Ms. Chadbourne raises some good issues that were good and some documentation that I think was helpful to the presentation that probably, in context, could have been presented by staff, but I think your points are well-taken as well.
All right. In a lot of ways, this is an engineering exercise, and it improves the hydrology in the area, gets rid of some overtopping that's occurring on the RTD lot in the event of the storm with a 1% chance of occurring in any given year. Really appreciate Ms. Chadbourne pointing out Section B2 of the South Platte River Corridor Design Objectives. That's something I've been looking at as we've been discussing this, especially in the context that I heard someone mention that the Englewood/City Gulch would be piped. And I'd urge staff when reviewing that to consider those. However, that is not the item before us tonight. So I also appreciate that this does help reduce flooding in the Mineral and Santa Fe intersection and meets the criteria set forth in the engineering standards and urban drainage and flood control.
Nothing additional.
David?
Yeah, I guess I'll just say that the applicant did a really good job engineering this, and it appears to improve the drainage in the area. And I think just on its own, it stands as a, like I said, an improvement to the area, and I think it's a good thing.
Yeah, with respects, I concur. Good comments, by the way. I appreciate what you guys are bringing up. I think that's good points, and certainly in context with people who have a better feel for this kind of thing or have seen it in other places as opposed to what I've seen. However, this is a bit of a continuation of some of the conversation we had when staff did the floodplain study sessions. And the thing, you know, again, with respects to the applicant, and traditionally, I personally have tended to lean to, if you have a desire to buy a piece of property and you have an interest in developing it, you know, that's, I mean, that's essentially what we want to see. It's, you know, traditionally how communities have grown. And, you know, I think, all things being equal, you know, I've never had a major problem with that. On the other hand, when we start putting structures in floodplains, I think that equation gets changed a bit. Our primary objective is absolutely health, safety, and welfare. Now, the other side of that coin is, the gentleman indicated that, yeah, the engineering algorithms are set up so that you're at a certain level, and then there's safety net built in on top of that, which I also very much respect. I'm concerned, I remain concerned mainly because I think urban drainage and the engineering models are working off of data that may not be changing as fast as what we're seeing happen in the environment. It's a completely different issue, but, you know, what they're saying about the fires in California is, a lot of this is because they're putting homes in places that they never should have been built in the first place. And that zoning laws and what, putting those types of structures in harm is way one way or the other, isn't necessarily the best idea people in planning have ever had. If I understand staff correctly, we've got a variety of intercession points here where we can look at the plans as they come through. Either we will, staff will, council will. I mean, I trust staff, I trust council, I trust the engineers, or everybody's got the right objectives in mind here. It's got to be a project that works for everyone. I'm going to go along with it and support it, but I remain concerned that we need to take our tolerances up a notch on some of this stuff because I don't know that we really know what we're dealing with. So...
Thank you. I'll start my comments with addressing South Platte Park. This is just to the west of the Enzer property where the, where this dispersal pond would be. This is not a natural habitat, although nature is reclaiming the land. The land has been chewed up, new roads, various excavations. There's an overhead power line directly to the east of the river. There's already a 60-inch drainage pipe from Santa Fe that has affected the flow, channeledized the flow. So I think this project will improve what's going on there. And while we're at it, perhaps there can be some extra excavation and sculpting to help nature reclaim that area even faster. I think this is a regional, reasonable change in controlling possible flooding. It's, I guess it's a little bit comforting to know that South Suburban Park Recreation is reasonably comfortable with the process and the plan. Details to be worked out later. The channelization on the north end of Enzer could turn out to be an interesting feature if done right, rather than just a utilitarian ditch. So I encourage the applicant to make it something special. It's your entry feature. Make it so. And I think, again, I think the additional water can be a real benefit to South Platte Park. I'll be supporting the application. Any other comments? Time to vote.
The vote's unanimous, and the motion carries.
Thank you. Good luck moving forward and slogging through the rest of the process. Staff report, please.
Just a couple updates for you. As you know, at your last meeting, you had recommended approval of the PPP, the Preliminary Project Plan. Tomorrow night, staff is presenting the concept at a study session to city council, since we have a new, a few new members. But I wanted to let you know that that formally will be in front of city council on the 19th, and then on January 16th for second reading. And the other thing is, you tend to have a joint meeting with Planning Commission on January 9th relative to the mineral station area master plan and next steps on that process. Those are the two updates I have. If you have any questions?
Could you give us an update on the Bellevue Corridor Study, as well as the downtown design line and standards consolidation? And I think, John, you went to, you had your first meeting, and maybe you can...
I believe the first meeting's going to be this Wednesday.
Oh, the first meeting will be this Wednesday, okay.
So last week, we did put out on the website the schedules for both of those. And so, yes, the downtown design guidelines and the review of that gets underway this month. And John is your rep on Planning Commission, and I anticipate public meetings and study sessions will be coming up in the January, February timeframe for you. And then Bellevue Corridor, as we know, that public meeting, there was first meeting was back in the end of October. So we are working through that, and we do anticipate the next public meeting to be in early February. But more to come once we figure all those details out. And like I said, they are, both of them, the outline and the structure of process is on the Littleton Plans website.
Any further comments? Any? Seeing none, just a couple. It's our last meeting of the year. Thank you for all your hard work and efforts and time and lost weekends, going through, slogging through multiple 100-page reports. So I do want to thank you for all your hard work. I also want to thank staff for their hard work this year. And for the first time in several years, I do feel that finally getting somewhat organized in the Community Development Department and Planning and the Building Department. It's a hard slog. There's a, use that word again. It's been a bit messy, and cleaning it up has taken a lot of effort and work. Appreciate your efforts and your efforts. Thank you. So have a great holiday season. And those of you that are up for, applying for a new term, make sure you fill out your forms if you're interested. I did so today. So we have four terms expiring this March. So, sorry?
Who's expiring? I had to log.
Andrew, myself, uh-oh, Lynn, and who's the fourth?
Oh.
Okay. Great. That's all I have. Seeing nothing else, we are, oh, boy, adjourned.
Thank you.